All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting of the Isani City Council to order. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Do you want to roll call? We have all council members present. Is there any public comment this evening? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda unless we have any changes there.
Mayor and Council, we don't have any changes per se, but I do want to make note of a last minute addition to the agenda, and that is K three as a business item resolution considering the approval of volunteers and the collection dispersment of donations at illuminate Isani that was added today.
Motion to approve with the change.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion carries five zero. Let's see, we have a proclamation here for International Overdose Awareness Day, which is August thirty first of two thousand and twenty four, and I'll just go ahead and read that proclamation here. Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day is recognized globally on August thirty first to raise awareness about the risks of overdosing, honor the individuals whose lives have been lost from overdosing, and acknowledge the grief felt by families, friends, and other communities. And whereas every human deserves our best efforts to prevent injury and death from overdose, and it is imperative to support overdose prevention policies and projects, and to help the wider community understand that drug overdose is a social issue which impacts the victim of families, friends, and communities. And whereas those will be remembered with purple ribbons in downtown Isani in the month of August. And now therefore, I, James Gordon, Mayor of the City of Isani, do hereby proclaim August thirty first, two thousand and twenty four, as overdose awareness day in the City of Isani, and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. I don't know, did they decorate?
Yep, my mom got out there, I believe, August fourteenth, and she got most of them up. She still has a few more to go.
Tell her thank you for doing that.
Yep.
All right, otherwise, let's see, we'll move on to G one and G two. We have the August seventh, two thousand and twenty four, city council meeting minutes, and we have the August seventh, two thousand and twenty four, city council budget work session minutes.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion to approve those minutes from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion carries five zero. For announcements, we've got Park and Rec, our board meeting on Tuesday, August twenty seventh at six P M. City Council meeting on Tuesday, September third at seven P M. And the E D A meeting Tuesday, September third, immediately following the council meeting. Do we have any council committee reports?
I have a few. So, school board and chamber meet later this week, so I'll have updates at the next meeting. Today, I had a little bit of a marathon of meetings. I went down to L M C starting at nine this morning. If you don't know what L M C is, basically, it's a committee meeting with all the representatives of most of the cities from Minnesota. There's a fair amount that show up. I'd say probably thirty in person and maybe forty online. So basically, it's just like a sounding board for the state. Today was a human resources committee meeting. The important discussion item today was on the Earn Sick and Safe Time mandate that the state basically threw on us, and that's a bit of a mess. Seemed like most of the H R departments are having a hard time understanding the language. It wasn't very well written, and it was kind of forced through. So they're looking at ways to recommend approval of that. I asked today if I could submit a recommendation for a policy to just ask them to get rid of it entirely. It's so poorly done that I don't even know how it made it through in the first place. And then we talked also about some work comp stuff and payroll payouts, which wasn't super exciting. For the economies meeting, most of the meeting was focused on housing, and they call it, I think, middle housing market or whatever they call it. Most of the cities want to do, of course, increase taxes and do government funding housing, it seems like. I brought up an idea to possibly maybe look at some way instead of actually having the government make these things more complicated, if there was some sort of option just to help people with their interest rates. So help get the interest rates down, because right now you're having a lot of big conglomerate companies coming in and buying housing because people can't afford mortgages, and then they're basically, it's skyrocketing the price of rent. Everybody deals with the interest, and so that was one thing that I brought up to the chair of that committee, and they had never thought about it, and I'm hoping he maybe looks into something like that, because you can actually keep it a little more simple by doing that than starting all these silly programs that they want to kind of force through. And I know, Jimmy, you had a couple of the L M C meetings as well. I didn't know if you had anything from those, but I think they're a pretty good use of our time. Definitely going to do it every single year. We should always have someone down there. I've said that a few times. And also Julie Blaha from the State Auditor's Office was there. She said there's, she's noticing a big shortage in public finance staff. It's became, it's made them become more lean. She wants to diminish the amount of audit work that the state does. And to me, that was a little bit scary, because I think a lot of our residents are asking for more explanations on where the state money's going. So keep that in mind when you vote, because it's important for us to have answers on where our money's going as taxpayers.
Yeah, I had one meeting this week yesterday, and I have another one tomorrow morning, but not a ton of stuff. There's a lot of things that they're promoting that we would probably disagree with as a council. But that's one of the reasons that we're there, is to suggest changes. And I have another meeting tomorrow. I forget what that one is about, but I've got to look at that agenda there. But yeah, yesterday, I mean, it was, I think it was service delivery. One of the things was grants for Box Elder, or not Box Elder, but Emerald Dash. And which I think we've already kind of been aware of, and I think we maybe even applied for some of that stuff already, if I remember right, or no? Or did we decide not to really handle much of that, if it was?
Mayor and Council, from what I remember, talking to some people, that if you're getting at treating the trees, that it's inevitable the tree is probably going to die.
Yeah.
You can treat it, but it's eventually going to die.
Right. Yeah, so I don't know, maybe we never did actually pursue grants or anything like that, even to deal with it. I think we just said, you know.
Not, not as yet, no.
Yeah.
Was it grants for removal or just treatment?
Oh, I think they had all sorts of different things. I mean, there was probably a half hour conversation about money that was available for those types of purposes. So I'm not sure exactly, you know, exactly what's available, but there's different organizations out there that I'm sure are promoting different things. So anyway, just something that was kind of the highlight of that meeting, otherwise it was pretty dull, so.
We do have a policy recommendation, hopefully, for the next meeting.
Yeah, we've got, there's a few things that probably could be recommended.
I got one coming too, so it's important for us to do that, and hopefully.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably going to fall on deaf ears, but, you know, I mean, there's no other way to change it other than trying, so. Any other council committee reports?
I had a B M X meeting, same stuff. They're getting ready for races, and they're boosting their new riders, so that's good. They're still the number one track in the country. So, yeah, they're doing good, staying busy.
All right. We'll go ahead and move on to our first business item here. We've got K one, the interview of Erica Zedon for vacant park and recreation board seat, so Erica, if you want to come on up here and.
Hi.
If you could just state your name and address for the record there, and then we'll have some questions for you.
Yep. Okay, my name, Erica Zedon, and my residence?
Just your address, yeah.
Seven oh nine Bergman Court, Isani.
Okay, sounds good. Well, yeah, we'll just have some questions here for you. And tell us about yourself and why the council should consider you for the park and recreation board seat.
I've lived here for twenty plus years. We have five children, so we're active in our community with those kids. I volunteer at the B M X track. I am outside. I probably visit four parks, I'd say, on average a week. And I'm a teacher. I run the P T O, and I've also been the director of a nonprofit in Isani.
Do you have experience being a park and recreation board member or similar experience that would help you in this role?
Yes, I was the wife of a park and board member for ten years, so I was his eyes and ears. He came to the meeting, and I told him what I thought.
What's most wives do?
I won't, we won't tell him you said that.
Oh, he knows it, it's okay. No, but I'm familiar with grant writing. I know how to run a budget. I know how to stay on budget. I know how to make, you know, find funding for things when it's needed.
Sounds good. What do you feel is the most important role and the purpose of the Parks and Recreation Board in our community?
To create an outdoor area that is available for all of our residents.
And what do you believe are the top priorities for the city's current park system?
The upkeep and safety of our current parks.
Do you have experience in long range planning? Please explain.
I've run a nonprofit, so there's long range planning, there's goals, there's five year outlook, ten year outlook. Yes.
All right. The Park and Recreation Board reviews and makes recommendations on the overall planning, management, and policies of our park system for the city council. How do you plan to tie that into the overall goals of the city council?
Basically, just communicating, making sure there's open communication between the Park and Rec Board, the community, and the council.
Okay. If you could bring a new or enhanced feature, event, or service to our park system, what would that be?
A batterscape park.
Stephanie's all on board with that.
She's my favorite.
The Park and Recreation Board typically meets the fourth Tuesday of the month at six P M. Does this fit into your other time commitments?
Besides next week, yes. I'm at B M X next week.
Okay. And is there anything else you would like to add to assist us in considering you as a park board candidate? All right, awesome. Thank you, Erica. All right, any discussion?
Hi, Emma, are we allowed to ask a question?
Yeah, sure, I think so.
Okay.
As long as it's the same for all the applicants, and we only got one, so I think we're okay.
So, what are your views on larger amenities like the amphitheater, illuminate Isani, or Splash Pad, or the B M X arena? What are your views on how those get developed?
Do you really want that?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't like the amphitheater. I wish we had a water park. B M X is one of the greatest sports ever, and it brings so much to this community. It'd be ridicul- Yeah, it's fantastic. I don't remember what else.
Like illuminate Isani?
plead the fifth.
Okay.
It's not good, it's not bad. I'm not a Christmas light person, so I'm probably not the right one to ask if you want a positive review, and I don't really care for the negative.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion at all, or?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it, so. I have a motion from Councilman Holmgren and a second from myself. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion carries five zero. Thanks, Erica. All right, moving on to K two, the Whisper Ridge Park Survey Results. I just want to say, first of all, a hundred and one responses.
Our community is dying to tell us things.
I think we could just, I think we could just keep the park, I think.
I wish we, we need to do more of this outreach.
We were always going to keep the park, we were just going to clean it up.
We need to advertise.
We were not getting rid of the park, I want to be clear about.
We were not, you're right. We were never getting rid of the park. We were just going to change it.
Basically, basically.
But I think we could wait to change it probably until we have a better solution for what's going to go there and replace it.
A letter to residents went out on Friday, July twenty sixth, within seven hundred feet of Whisper Ridge Park, or went out on July twenty fourth, sorry, to inform them of the survey, and the survey was available starting July twenty ninth through August ninth for a total of twelve days. Their survey was a total of four questions. We wanted to keep it short and sweet, otherwise people get bored. And included multiple choice, yes or no, and short answer. The survey received a hundred and one responses in the twelve day time period. And Julia did want to be here, but she had a family emergency to do this, just an F Y I.
Quick question before we go into this. How much money did it cost to do this?
For, it's just a Google form that we use, so.
Okay, and then the mailings too?
The mailings, oh, I'm not, I don't know off the top of my head, sorry.
It probably wasn't a lot of money, though, is what I'm getting at. So I've always been pushing for, we need more surveys, we need more data, before we just think that we know what all our residents want, because we don't, so.
It probably took, I want to say about a day to, since we don't have a paper folder, to fold and do all of that of Julia's time, because it was, it's a large park, and so it covers a large area of the city, so just an F Y I on that. But I'm not sure exactly what that number was. She would know.
Okay.
So, the first question was, how often do you use or visit Whisper Ridge Park? And the most selected option was one time per week with thirty six responses, though never, and I didn't know Whisper Ridge Park existed, did equate to forty four of the responses, so. Question number two was, if you utilize Whisper Ridge Park, what amenity do you use the most? And the most selected option was not applicable with forty one responses, and the second most selected option was the basketball court with thirty eight responses. So definitely a lot of basketball court use at this park from our responses in general. Would you be in favor of the city turning Whisper Ridge Park back to green space due to the current poor condition of the amenities, until a larger plan could be put in place for the future of the park? And this is a yes or no. And we had, no was fifty six point four percent of the responses, so fifty seven responses. And forty four responses said yes, they would prefer it to be put back to green space.
I would like to add to that, that I don't think the condition of it is really that poor. It's really not that bad. I mean, I would play, I've played on way worse than that for both tennis and basketball, and the fences are nice, so I.
I think the fences are in good shape. The court is definitely in.
The tennis courts are, the tennis court.
We would consider in very poor condition. There's large cracks.
I think we need to have, we need to have a conversation about what we consider very poor condition, because this is Isani, not a Dyna, you know.
Correct, but there is, we just do need to keep in consideration also that the cost goes up the longer we put it off. So if we have to reconstruct a court, it's way more expensive than resurfacing a court. And every year, because of inflation, if we wait five years, it's that much more expensive to reconstruct that court. So there's things like that to keep in mind as well. So there's, we, Julie and I went there and took pictures again, which we did previously, but just to give a better idea, we had her stand by the pictures, so we could see how a good gauge.
Yeah, that one, that one crack isn't, definitely isn't the best, but the basketball court's actually not that bad.
The large, there's large cracks across both the basketball and tennis courts, uneven surfacing causing pooling, so there's definite dips where water is held, and it's basically eroded and crumbling in some of the areas, which is breaking down and giving a pretty rundown appeal. The fences seemed actually in pretty good shape, except for there's one area that I thought maybe could use a little bit of T L C. And there's not, and like, there's no places to really sit in the park, which would be nice within that area for kids to sit. And even when we visited Madsen, which could come up later, people brought chairs with them, and adding bunches to these parks for their amenities would be something I think would help people want to use them more. The pathways on the north entrance are uneven and basically creating a hazard for anybody in accessible, like needing accessibility through the park. Like, it's not probably easy for a wheelchair user to get to that park, as well as throughout the park. And there's a large amount of sand sediment found within the courts, and fencing is not reaching the ground in some of the spots, and that's on the side where the door is. Like, it's up a little high, so a ball could easily roll right under, so that would need to be fixed. And then across the entrance door, it's just kind of hanging there. And then we're just looking for your recommendation on how to proceed. This was taken out of the C I P, I believe in two thousand and eighteen, when the park did their overall park plan originally, and it was decided that they were not going to keep updating this court for lack of use, which is why we brought it forward, because that's what it dictated, is what was the point of the condition of it not being worth upkeeping any longer. And so that's why we're here now, is because that's what the recommendation was prior, so.
And even out of the hundred and one responses, which half of them, almost half of them said they had no idea it was even there.
And then fifty percent is yes and fifty percent no, basically.
But still, that's a, that's a very, very, very high response rate.
I have never had so many people reach out to me about one specific thing as I did about this. At least, at least a dozen emails or messages about it. And the people in that neighborhood especially, they say, they were shocked to even know that it was an option, because kids play basketball there every single night, every night, and no matter what, basically, so.
Did you say something, Josie?
Mayor and Council, I do want to add also, I do want to thank people for filling out the survey, but also the number of people who sent emails to the general city email box. Those were all in favor, the ones that we received. But thank you for the public who took the time to send an email to me and let me know your thoughts.
What'd you think?
So that's in addition to the results that she had shared.
Sure.
I think maybe my recommendation is, let's see what's going to cost to fill these cracks until we can, you know, we got another somebody else on the Park and Rec Board that's got some good ideas to tell the Park Board.
Yeah, I mean.
I think we should first, let's look at what cost to repairs to do to it. And maybe in that equation is to look at maybe putting some seating out there for it. I'm not opposed to maintaining a park. I'm just opposed to putting money into a park that isn't getting used. I look at that, that yes and no question, answer for, for, in favor or not, is pretty close. I mean, it's fifty fifty as far as I'm concerned. So, yes, people are spoken. Let's, I think maybe that's what we ought to do, is we ought to go forward to see what's going to, at least get it to give us another year or two out of it, before we have to really do something with the surface.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a nice space. I think it's just people are, the Park Board was trying to come up with something better to do with the space than what it currently is, and I don't know, I mean, I think.
Basketball is obviously the big thing.
That's what they're using, yeah.
And then, you know, maybe we look at maybe doing something, expand, taking out of the tennis court area of it, because that's obviously where the most work needs to be done. And then maybe just address the basketball portion of it. Maybe the tennis court area, turn it into a pickleball area. I don't know.
Well, and we had conversations about that too, and there was some concern about the noise and then parking being an issue.
Parking is an issue for that park. There isn't a ton of parking. We did go there and parked ourselves, and there's only a few spots, and it's pretty far away, and there's.
And maybe we can look at maybe changing some of that to maybe give some more parking, you know. I think we just need to.
I mean, yeah, well, and I don't think, I don't think we have the ability to get a driveway in there, because that's part of what we talked about too, is that you could, you could have more parking inside the area, if you could get there, but we can't get there.
Specifically on one side, like, it is the ten feet of the path that the city has. And so on the one side, I think it's probably twelve feet. We don't have a ton of space. It's just enough for the paths to get to that section, which is why, long term, that park is much larger than just that area. And so if we were able to put in boardwalks, for instance, is what it would require, and what is in the park plan, that would be on the other side of the park over by First Avenue Northwest. So that's a long road ahead, but.
So Jeff and I went and talked to the neighbors over there, and they said, we asked about the pickleball to at least one person. They said it probably wouldn't bother them, but the noise is something that we should consider if that's something we want to do, so I think that we'd have to ask the immediate neighbors about the noise. And then as far as the parking, they had said that it didn't really bother them. They just know they're parked there, using the park, like, on the street, so.
Well, like I said, I think first and foremost, we need to look at what's going to cost, at least get it to a point where it's safe, whatever.
I think we, we just send it back to the Park Board and let them come up with some ideas, I think, at this point. But the reason we're even talking about it is because the Park Board had recommended pulling everything out and just turning it into green space, and so.
I think that's a good idea. The Park Board has considered pickleball numerous times for those who are interested, because that was one of the things, but because of the noise complaints, it's just not a great park for that, considering the location of the house is so close. And we do have other parks that don't have as much housing. For instance, Madsen, where there's already noise to drown it out, as well as Academy Park, where we have the temporary lines painted, where there isn't any houses surrounding that. So really not recommended by the Park Board after we discuss that as well, so.
And we did ask the three or four neighbors we talked to, and not a single one has seen a dog in there. So I don't know where that information came from, but that, there's no way that's true.
Matt, you said you guys got to clean that up a lot, don't you?
Yeah, Public Works has had to clean the dog waste out of that park a number of times.
Inside the fence?
Inside the fence, yep.
Okay, well, the neighbors have never seen it.
Well, that doesn't mean they go out there in the middle of the night, and then maybe somebody's got their dog run loose and it goes in there. So I mean, that's, just because they don't see him doesn't mean it's not happening.
All right, well, we're not going to take any action on it right now. Send it back to the Park Board and tell them to come up with a plan, and.
Thank you, yep.
Okay. So moving on to K three, resolution considering the approval of volunteers and the collection and dispersment of donations at illuminate Isani.
Good evening again. The council determined that the two thousand and twenty four illuminate Isani event will be free of charge to attendees, and have determined the budget this year based off of a previous conversation a couple months ago. And so for that budget, we are not hiring paid contractors who then help with the getting volunteers groups to volunteer, which would, they would get up to a six hundred dollar stipend, it's generally five hundred, to volunteer through that hired contractor. And so I know we had had a discussion previously about allowing volunteer groups to collect donations at certain spaces throughout, and we have allowed this in the past. But I really wanted to have a clear direction from you guys as we're recruiting volunteers. We're starting to do that, and we just didn't know what exactly to tell them. So I was like, we have to go back to council to confirm what you guys wanted. And so there's a few options that we see, and you guys can think of other options. Obviously, there's a million ways we could do this. But one would be to, that the volunteer groups collect cash donations at their stations and keep all of those cash donations. And then we had discussed using Q R codes for donations as well throughout the park, and our new software will allow us to do this. And so then those donations would go back just to the event. Another way we could do this is that all electric and electronic and cash donations would be combined, and then a certain percentage of that would go back to that group that volunteered for that event that night, which could be great for them or great for us. And then also, we could consider just all of the donations, electronic and cash is going to the event, which isn't ideal, but I wanted to give you all of the options. And then all donations, cash and electronic, go to the volunteer group of the evening, which also is not what I recommend, but it's for you guys to decide what you think would be the best route. I know other lighting events do a twenty five seventy five split or a fifty fifty split on the night for events like this, because volunteer groups, a lot of them are community groups. We do have some who give it back just to the event as well. They get, they choose, oh, no, we want our fifty percent to go back to the event. We just like being here. And give that option to them always, but it is good for those youth groups who do volunteer. And we've been really lucky with a lot of great volunteer groups who really do help make our event possible, so.
I like the option two with maybe a fifty fifty and see how it goes.
I like option two, fifty fifty. I don't know. I mean, what do you see more often, twenty five seventy five? And twenty five, when you say twenty five seventy five, are you saying the group gets twenty five, the event gets seventy five?
Yep.
I think I, I don't know.
I mean, it doesn't have to be those either. You could do thirty seventy, so just however you guys see. It's just, those are the ones that I've seen in the past.
The more you give them, the more they're going to volunteer, so.
True. What do you guys think?
I'd like to see the event make some money, at least get some of the money back.
But if you give them fifty percent, they're going to work harder to get more donations, because they get half of it too. So if you cut it down, I mean, where's the sweet spot?
I'd be in favor of fifty fifty.
It's important to, these volunteer groups not only volunteer and give their time, but generally, we see.
but generally we see people who know them within the community come on the nights that they're volunteering. So, um, just keeping that into consideration, they, it could possibly be in our favor to do 50-50, it could be in our favor to do 20. I can't give you the best answer, but I, I think it could go either way.
George, what do you think?
40-60.
Yeah, something like that, 40-60 we could go.
Mike, what do you think?
Few things. One, I wonder if, um, donations shouldn't be just by, by, by day, but rather by the entire event. Um, otherwise you may very well find that some volunteer groups find certain days to be very advantageous, and other days less so. The other thing I'm thinking is, um, whether or not volunteer groups to receive donations should be required to prove, um, 501(c)(3) status. Without knowing ahead of time how much certain groups might gather a donation, if Falcon National Bank says, yeah, we're going to bring over six of our staff, and they make $1,100 that night, um, I'm not 100% certain on the tax implications of that. It might be that I need to issue them a 1099 for a city event that then went to a, an entity that's not, not, yeah, because it would be over 600, um, in that scenario, um, but they're not a 501(c)(3).
But again, it's fault.
So we, maybe, so maybe the answer there is maybe cap it. Here's the split, but we're, you're done at $599.
Is that per person?
No, it would be, that would be by the entity.
I think I like the idea of it all at the end, and then distribute it. Because like you said, some groups may do better than others.
Yeah, because you're going to have some nights that are less advantageous for a variety of reasons, and, you know, you might have, you know, Girl Scouts go and they make 40 bucks, and the next night the Boy Scouts go and they rake in 700. Well, I mean, I don't know that the Girl Scouts did any less, or the Boy Scouts did any more. So it might just be, we collect all donations at the end and then say, all right, you're, it's, you know, 50-50, uh, on the daily average, so. Volunteer groups that all committed the same number of hours and the same, you know, had the same commitment to the event, are going to, going to get the same benefit.
So the, the volunteers are only going to be there Friday and Saturday nights, right?
Fridays and Saturdays, yes, so are we considering the entire event then, or is it just the Friday and Saturday nights that we have volunteers?
I think if it was, if it was the entire month, and you had like some Mondays and Tuesdays, and, you know, I mean, which is going to be open the entire month, but you're not going to have volunteers on the slow days, right, so.
Well, what I'm thinking is, is on, on the days when you might have an event, on the days when you're going to have volunteer groups, or you, you could have another competing event, or you might have inclement weather, right?
Which we've had happen before.
Now the people that stood in the rain and toughed it out, actually got almost nothing, and the people that showed up the next day when the weather was awesome, just made bank.
But at the same time, you want them to promote that they're going to be there, and that they, and get them to promote the event too, to where they're getting people to come, and if they have to share that with everybody in kind of a community pool, is there less incentive for them to?
Well, I, I think it provides them insurance of a floor, right? It's easier to find, it's easier to understand that there's a minimum value to their time. It certainly takes away a maximum value, but it would provide a minimum value, which is probably the larger hurdle to get over initially to get people to volunteer.
And it's, the businesses sometimes volunteer too and stuff, to help out, and?
Sometimes we do get business volunteers, but they are not, um, getting any donations from us.
Right, it's more advertising for them than just being part of the community. So I would say volunteers that are a 501(c)(3) or that are, you know, that type of a nonprofit organization, some type of nonprofit.
Youth groups.
Sure.
Community organizations and nonprofits with a 501(c) within the community.
But otherwise, if there's donations that come in, you know, which I guess if you just wanted to split it the entire time, then it would just be split amongst those groups that volunteer, but. I don't know, what do you guys think?
I think it's a great opportunity for, for different groups within the city and the community to, to raise a little bit of money though, too, so I'd like to.
I think we should heed Mike's advice on this, and do, do a cap and then split it at the end amongst whoever volunteers.
Well, the cap was more in with the idea of if you're paying, if you're paying just people to be there.
If you're 501(c)(3), you wouldn't.
Yeah, if you're 501(c)(3), you can just accept a donation, and it's not a big deal. It's when you're, if like, for example, Falcon National Bank is not a 501(c)(3), and they earn $1,200 one night.
Okay.
I think the tax implications are that I have to say that this is the city's money originally, and they received a donation, now they have to get a 1099 and go through all of those hoops that I don't know that are required otherwise.
We have never let a non-community or like a youth group or a 501(c)(3) eligible group volunteer, like, and get donations from us in the past, so just to clarify that.
Well, so I guess the question, it sounds like we're kind of, uh, if we are going to split it, you guys want to split 50-50 or 25-75 or 60-40? Or let's settle that question first, I guess, I think, you want to go 50-50?
75, 25.
60-40.
You want, you want the city to keep the 75? And you want the city to take the 60 or the 40?
Take the 60.
Okay. George?
60-40.
60-40, okay, I can get on with that. So 60-40 or so, we're thinking with the city taking 60 and the, the, uh, the nonprofit taking the 40, and then we want to split the, the donations and stuff throughout the entire event amongst the nonprofits that volunteer? Or do we want to do, you know, each have their own individual night, and what do you guys think?
I think it's fair to both split it for the whole event.
Can we make sure for accepting donations that they have some sort of script so that people know that they're not only donating to?
Yes.
To both, okay.
Yep, and, um, we'll post it on everything then, once we have clear, it'll be on their volunteer things when they sign up, they'll have to sign something that says it, so they're aware, plus we'll put it on all of our advertising for recruiting volunteers, plus we'll have it on our website, so.
So I'd say 60-40 and split it amongst the groups for the entire period of time, and, uh.
And then I would like to also address the minimum number of volunteers, last year we required eight to be working. We don't have ticketing this time, so I don't know if we still think we should have eight people out there. We will have fire pits still, Santa Claus helpers, as well as popcorn and marshmallows, so as long as they're donated, which it looks like we're getting them, so, um, just to keep that in mind, it's nice to have.
They're going to probably want to have at least eight if they're doing all that work.
With the donations too, because that, basically, that's going to take the place of needing to collect tickets, and then some.
Well, it'd be probably donation boxes too.
Yeah, we'll have donation boxes at certain stations for cash, and then we'll also have the QR codes throughout the event, for people to do electronically.
So are, is one of their goals, are they supposed to promote that you donate, I assume, or are they just helping run the event?
We could have somebody promoting that you donate too, if that's two of the jobs that you want out there.
That's what I thought it was for.
Yeah.
What do we need, okay.
So we have, um, just volunteers that help with keeping the campfires lit, everything picked up. We have two people usually roaming around, just making sure everything's, everybody's following the rules and being respectful and having a good time, and just keeping the place clean, so.
How many do you think we need?
I would say six to eight would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
All right. And, do you need actually us to vote on that, or?
Yes, so Mayor and Council, we will update the resolution to include the actions that were just discussed here, um, and to make sure that that's in there, so a vote would be needed.
What did you say?
So a vote will be needed, please.
All right, so I'll just go ahead and make the motion, then we're going to do a 60-40 split with the city taking the 60 and the volunteer groups taking the 40. Uh, we're going to split the amount through the entire event amongst the nonprofits, only the nonprofits, and we want a minimum of six volunteers. I have a second.
Perfect.
Anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
I have a motion for myself and a second from Councilman Hemanal, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries 5-0. And, let's see, consent agenda is next there, if I can get a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Holmgren, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries 5-0. Any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries 5-0, we are adjourned, and we'll jump into our budget workshop session meeting here in just a minute.